I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, September 19th, and we'll be starting now. Would you please, I'm gonna, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and then I'd like to make an announcement, would everybody remain standing after the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For, most people know this, but last week, our planning director Harvey Kraus's wife, Josie, passed away, and today was the memorial service that was very nice. And so, in Harvey's honor, would we take a moment of silence and just, you know, give thanks for everything that we have received. All right, thank you very much. Roll call, please show that all commissioners are present, and next order of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held on August 15th, 2007. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I agree, so approve the minutes.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lortano and a second from Commissioner Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, public comments. If anybody would like to make a public comment to the Planning Commission, there are cards outside on the desk, or we can get you a card. If it's not on tonight's agenda, please fill out a card and you're allowed to come up and speak right now. If it is on tonight's agenda and you do want to speak, we would still appreciate having a card filled out, and please give it to the clerk of the commission. That takes care of that. Does anybody want to speak? Okay, seeing none. Disclosure of ex parte communications. Are there any ex parte communications on this side for the commission? No, no ex parte communications. Okay, now we'll move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is by a single consent motion, the commission may approve any number of applications where the commission staff and the applicant are agreement, and there is an invitation by the chairman to do so, which I invite everybody to do. And the one item on our consent agenda is case 0670000001, 207th Avenue and Pecos, general plan amendment, and the staff, the applicant is Earl Curly and Lagard, on behalf of McCray Holdings, and the staff is recommending that the public hearing for this case be continued until October 17th, 2007, at the next commission meeting. Is there anybody that'd like to have this item pulled? If not, I entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Chairman, was that October 17th or November 14th?
According to my sheet, it says October 17th, but I'll check today.
Mr. Chair, I think that it's November 14th.
The, yeah, the, the agenda says this, October 17th.
The agenda, the, I'll, I'll correct, okay, what, what's the date?
November 14th.
I will correct that, the staff recommendation is to November 14th. Thank you.
Salute, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion from Vice Chair DeBrocker. I need a second, please, from Commissioner Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, new business. Case 0730000002, Shasta Pools and Spa Use Permit. We're gonna have a public hearing to consider a request for a use permit to allow the limited outdoor display of outdoor accessory items in conjunction with a primary retail use on 2.57 acres, generally located west of the northwest corner of Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road, within the proposed Cobblestone Creek commercial area. The applicant is HGTALLC, and I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask for the staff presentation.
Thank you Chairman Gelsor, members of the commission. The aerial photo that you are looking at shows the location for the proposed Shasta Pools and Spas site. The site is located in the Cobblestone Creek Commercial Center at the northwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway, and is in Phase 8 of the Palm Valley Masters Plan. All right, if you can see this, all right on that, you're looking at conceptual site plan for the Shasta Pools and Spas site. This application is requesting a use permit to allow limited outdoor display of outdoor accessory items in conjunction with a primary retail use. This conceptual site plan reflects how the owner intends to develop the property. You can see here in the middle, there is the Sales and Design Center, where customers would enter through, and then they would then be escorted into the north courtyard. In the north courtyard, there are four pool park areas with related displays that enhance the pool parks. And here you can see some conceptual elevations for the Shasta Pools and Spas site. The south elevation is the one that will be facing McDowell Road. Staff is recommending approval of the use permit, subject to stipulations in the staff report, as the proposed, proposed use is compatible with planned uses. It will not be a detriment to the people or properties surrounding it. The parcel land is adequate in size, and will also have sufficient vehicular access from Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell Road. This concludes the staff presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Additionally, Robert Burns, Representative Robert Burns Architects here is, is here to represent Shasta Pools and answer any questions as well.
Questions of staff?
The, the display is all gonna be behind the building.
There's no outdoor display gonna be in the parking lot along McDowell.
Correct. It'll be in the courtyard to the north, and there is a wall that will go around. I believe that it will have some view walls to the RID Canal area to the west.
Thank you.
Could I, I wanna piggyback off on Chairman Williams' question. At a lot of-
Thank you for the promotion.
Chairman Williams. At many pool stores, there is usually an outdoor display in front of the pool stores of PVC furniture, garden furniture, that kind of walks out in, at the beginning of the sales day, walks in at the end of the sales day. Does this application, will that be allowed with this, or is, or where do we stand on that type of display in front of the store? Or maybe the applicant wants to answer that and we'll leave that?
Yeah, I would definitely leave that to the applicant.
Okay, that is, whoever the applicant is, that is my, that will be my question, but are there any other questions of staff?
Oh, whoa, sorry. Sorry, I-
Mr. Bailey. Welcome back, Mr. Bailey. I think a few months ago, we actually reviewed the Cobblestone Creek property, they were actually going to place a wash house and gas station in the same facility. Does that still exist, or has this been transferred over and is now a Shasta Pool development?
No, actually, that was to the east. They do have, they do have the three use permits approved, but we have not seen any site plans to do this.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, let me invite the applicant to answer both Mr. Williams' question and my question about the outdoor display. And please identify yourself for the record.
Yes, my name is Bob Burns, Robert Burns Architects.
And my name is Brad Loy, I'm a director at Shasta Pools.
My question is, do you anticipate bringing retail furniture and retail display, retail sales items that are basically furniture and that kind of stuff in front of the store, or would that be displayed outside in the back with the pools, built-in pools?
This, this is a design center, would we design swimming pools? We would not be retailing furniture at all. Any kind of furniture displayed would be in the back pool park area. So there would be no PVC furniture in the front or in the store.
Oh, okay. We, do we need a stipulation on that? Because your major competitor at their design center has lots of goodies sitting out front, and I've, and you know who I'm talking about.
Begins with a P in A in O C K.
Yeah, begins with a P, right, right. So, I, I don't have heartburn over this, but I, you know, I guess I'd, I'd like it understood by the applicant that retail displays of movable stuff would be in the back.
Our competitor blends their pool design centers and their retail centers, we do not. This is strictly a pool design center. We have retail stores that sell chemicals and some furniture, but that is not this, this complex at all.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Are there any other questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Questions of the applicant? All right, I will, does anybody from the public like to make a comment? In that case, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for commission discussion first. Is there anything that the commission would like to ask or discuss? All right, then I will ask for a motion to approve the use of a special use permit for Shasta Pool and Spas for their design center.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we approve case 07-300-0002, the Shasta Pools and Spas Use Permit.
I have a motion from Commissioner Lox.
Second.
And a second from Vice Chair DeBrocker. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it in unanimous, 70. Okay. Next order of business is case 076000007, the Australia Falls Regional Shopping Center Site Plan. A request for approval of a site plan for the Australia Falls Regional Shopping Center on 106.8 acres, generally located between Encanto Boulevard and McDowell Road, and between Bullard Avenue and 150th Drive, within the Goodyear Planned Regional Center, PAD, and the applicant is West Core. And the, I will open the public hearing and take the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is a site plan for Australia Falls Regional Shopping Center. As just read by the chairman, this is the location proposed for the regional center, the northwest corner of Bullard and McDowell Road. There we have about 106 acres, that's within the Goodyear Planned Regional Center, PAD. The site plan here basically shows about 900 center, 2,000, 595 square feet of buildable area, configured in an open-air format. We have the parking fields surrounding the buildings, we have the main loop road, that'll be a main circulation element through the center, and then we have the out parcels surrounding the mall site that'll be coming for future development. Staff has reviewed this site plan, we find that it complies with the city's development standards and guidelines, and is consistent with the PAD. As such, we are recommending approval of the site plan, subject to five stipulations in the staff report. With that, Chairman, that concludes my part of this presentation. Staff's available for questions. Mr. Ron Lorch, Mr. Garrett, Garrett Newland also have a presentation for the commission as well.
Okay, questions of staff? Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams. Thank you. Are there any significant changes to the earlier presentation that we had on the mall?
There are some changes, please explain, please.
Thank you.
Okay, if no one else has a question, I have a question for staff. The out parcels, will they come back to us as each out parcel is developed for a site plan review, or would they be, some of them be handled administratively?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, there's a stipulation in, in the PAD zoning for this center. I think it capped it at 60,000 square feet. If a user came in larger than that, it would come back in for commission review. Other than that, you, it would be just administrative action if it didn't meet the requirements of that stipulation.
Okay, do, I'll ask the applicant first. Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
Just one final question. A point of clarification, if you don't mind, Steve. Stipulation before you say all signage will require a separate review and approval, and my understanding is that there's access sign package within this particular submittal. Are you then requesting additional sign review beyond what we're going to be approving tonight?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bailey, no, that wasn't our intent with the stipulation. It would be just the standard review. They would come in for the sign package.
And this stipulation is really-
And like we've seen before, and that's how we meant it, the standard stipulation, it does require review through and a separate permit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Commissioner Lox.
How sorry do they come? Just to follow up on the sign, because the concept of this is to have each, you know, separate storefront, having their own unique design, how then will the sign package work with that concept?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, with the sign package, we're probably, we're treat, in a sense, we're treating this interior area of the mall, we're gonna treat it a little differently. We're still kind of working out how that's going to work. West Core will set the parameters for the signage for all of their tenants, staff will get a chance to review that, and then we'll go through the sign package review, and we'll review it that way. But it's pretty much going to be left a lot to West Core and their tenants to come up with their parameters for inside this, that interior zone of the mall site.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could add to that, previously, West Core submitted, when they did the market at Australia Falls, and when the council for commission approved, approved the pylon signs, as you recall, there was an overall sign package for the West Core properties that basically encompassed the market of Australia Falls Power Center, this site, the site to the south of McDowell, and I believe the remaining pad parcels, for lack of a better word. Under that broad umbrella sign package, there was to be submitted at a later date, individual attachments to that sign package for each of those major developments. So as part of this mall, a regional shopping center, we, they will be preparing a separate sign package for submission, review, and approval, that would identify their proposal for comprehensive signage throughout the regional shopping center site for freestanding signs, directional signs, as well as the criteria and the design of interior wall signs. So you'll, we'll see all that again.
Okay, look, that was, any other questions of staff? Okay, now I invite the applicant to identify themselves and make their comments.
Chairman Gelsor and commission members, good evening. Before I begin, I just wanted to say to the, to the commission, to the community, that our thoughts are with Harvey and his wife on their loss. I wanted to just quickly introduce our team. I'm Garrett Newland, Vice President of Development with West Core, 11411 North Tatum in Phoenix. Ron Lorch with West Core will also be speaking, giving some, some of the design details tonight. With us tonight, too, we have Christine McRight from West Core, Margie Aaron from West Core, John Tran and Serenity Sharp from OmniPlan, which is our architectural firm, Gree Pickett, we have Jillian Hagan, our landscape architect, Bob Marman is here with Carter Burgess, our civil engineer, and I have to also just remind everyone that we're, we're doing this in partnership with Globe Corporation, Getz Family, Ray Carter, et cetera, that's who we're partnering with on the entire project. I did want to make that introduction. Okay, so we're back. We were here in February, and we gave you a pretty comprehensive look at our design concepts and where we were going with our site plan. Question was asked already, you know, what changes did we make? We made a few minor changes, and Ron will outline some of those when he steps up here. Nothing major, most of the site still lays out the way that it did previously. We have worked extensively with staff since February on our site plan, including all the technical submittal requirements, as well as the design guideline booklet that all of you have received. And we are asking for your recommendation of approval here tonight to go on to city council. And we'll move on to our concept plan. Up on the screen, you see the entire 330-acre Australia Falls master plan. This project will be developed in phases. Already under construction is the market at Australia Falls, which is at the immediate northeast corner of Pebble Creek and McDowell. We're under construction now. You can see the site's already been masquerading, going on. Utility work will begin soon, and you'll start to see vertical construction probably by the end of the year, and the first phase of that center will open in '08, fall of '08. The regional center is what we're gonna be talking about tonight and in October with council. Just wanted to go through the rest of the properties as well. There's an additional about 150 acres of other development that we'll be coming forward with, and again, in phases. You think about some of the other projects West Core has developed in this town, we typically will, will come in and try to develop anywhere from 200 to 400 or 500 acres, and it could be five to 10 years before that builds out. There's still some properties that we're working with in Chandler, for example, most of that has developed now, but there are still a few properties we're, we're developing. So the power center will come first, the regional center will come right on its heels, and it'll actually be under construction together, and then the remaining 150 acres that wrap around those two projects will come as market demand drives it over the next, you know, three to five years, most likely. I should also point out that we are partnering with the city on an improvement district to build all the streets around the property. And another major amenity to point out is the Bullard Wash. We're very pleased to partner with the city on that. It's gonna be a great amenity for the community, and a great amenity, you know, winding right through the middle of our, of our project. What that plan that we're showing up there right now shows, that is about 3 million square feet of development had built out. This will be the true center, the commercial core for Goodyear and for the entire Southwest Valley, you know, for the foreseeable future, and we're very excited to be a part of that. I want to move to the site plan, and Ron's gonna go into a much greater detail, but I just wanted to point out, similar to what we showed you previously, north would be to the right, up on the screen now, it's tipped over on its side. And again, it's, it's a little bit misleading, because the, the white and then the buildings, that's about 107 acres, very large site. The green that is wrapping around it is about 42 acres, that is the peripheral development that you'll see coming, again, some of that will start developing while we are under construction with the main mall. The property itself is about 975,000 square feet that you see there. With the peripheral development, it'll go up to about 1.2 to 1.3 million square feet within the street envelope that we're showing. There will be probably in excess of 150 individual tenants, different tenants, that come onto the project over, over time, over build-out. So it will be a true destination for all types of retail, restaurant, and many, many types of office and other development. Again, Ron's gonna talk about that a little bit further. We're also providing a number of community amenities to the project. We're putting in a community room for use by members of the community. There's a police substation that we're providing space for. There'll be a community information kiosk as well. We're developing a transit stop along 100 New Street, 150th Drive, and we'll be making a contribution for police services in the amount of $600,000 to help police start up at the center and then serve the surrounding community. I mentioned it already, but we believe Australia Falls will be the retail destination for the Southwest Valley and for Goodyear. Final note for me is on the schedule. Here for site plan recommendation for approval tonight, we'll be moving forward to council in October. Carter Burgess is already working hard on design drawings for all of our civil work, will be submitting very soon. Right, Bob?
[laughing]
Burning the midnight oil.
Good answer, Bob.
We expect to be under construction this December, so two months from now, and our opening date is scheduled for fall of '09. So that's where we are. All right, I'm gonna ask Ron Lorch to give some brief details about the design of the project, and then we'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have. Thanks.
Thank you, Garrett, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Ron Lorch, I'm Assistant Vice President of Planning and Design for West Core. If I could have the Elmo, I think it's gonna be easier to point to a few things. Again, as Garrett said, we reoriented the site plan northwards to the right, you've got Bullard across the bottom, you've got McDowell on the left side, Encanto on the right, and 151st across the top. The minor changes, Commissioner Williams, that we'd like to discuss is we extended Buildings 9 and 11 about 60 feet to the east. We moved this department store about 60 feet to the east, getting some more prime GLA in between, in the plaza area. It did several things, two of which were, it got better balance for us between the three plazas, and it also gave us the opportunity to get, gain more symmetry on the ring road. See how the ring road here bulges out? It now does the same thing down here. We also created a better balance between the parking from the south to the north, in that this drive now comes through the plaza and activates the northern part of the parking, so my shopping center patriots from McDowell can come through the site and get up to where a majority of the parking is. Also created a second drop-off to mirror this drop-off, so people can get dropped off right in the plaza if they wish. We also added 50,000 square feet of second-level office space on above Buildings 3 and 4. And what that will do, it will create more shade throughout the center of the project and give a great opportunity for office in Goodyear. If I could go back to the PowerPoint, please. This is the Siena Gua, which you saw in February. We looked to nature to get our design inspiration. We found it right here in our backyard in Arizona, in the Arizona Siena Gua, which is basically an oasis that, of lush landscape that meanders across the desert floor. You can see, we mirrored that image with our street as it winds north through the This is a typical streetscape that we chose to look at. It's basically looking north from Buildings 3 and 4. You see the second-story office above the retail. It also adds to the vertical interest of the building, since primarily most of our buildings, with the exception of the theater, which will be large, tall, almost a two-story structure, the food court, and one of the department stores will also be two-story. Buildings 3 and 4 will also be two-story now. So again, it starts to create a little more interest in the project and a lot more shade. You can see the gentle curve of the street, we've got a nice mix of palm trees, shade trees, seasonal color and planting, feds, to enhance the pedestrian experience of shopping. These are our three plazas. Again, we're running east to west. The theater is on the right side, the department store anchors the right side. Toward the theater, you'll see our entertainment garden. In the middle is our performance garden, and toward the right is our marble garden. Again, shaded pedestrian walks run through the center. Up against the buildings, we'll have trellises, we'll have colonnades, again, palm trees, shade trees, water, and seating areas in the middle of the plazas. This is a blow-up of our marble garden. It's more child-friendly. As you can see, we've got plenty of open lawn for kid free play, acrylic-colored marble spheres that we're looking at, that would basically spin on top of a very thin pool of water, plenty of cool shaded seating areas for relaxation. This again is a blow-up of the performance garden, and that is in the middle of the plaza. It's a gathering place, again, with cool water, open lawn, seating walls, raised planters, framed by large overstory trees to create deep shade. This is a snapshot of our architectural character that we're showing. Again, you're looking at Buildings 3 and 4, showing the massing in the second-story office above. We're maximizing, maximizing the shade with architectural elements, such as the office above. You'll notice the office above extends out over the retail by approximately 15 feet, so as you walk underneath those buildings, you will be in complete dense shade, not filtered shade from a trellis, complete shade. shade from a trellis, complete shade. We do have a number of trellises, colonnades, which will also complement that, running through the site. The corners of each building, as you can see, are anchored by a tower element that will also produce a terminus to each building as well as getting us some additional shade. I'm going to come back to that slide. This is our food court on the top. You can see the large overhang, lots of glass, two-story, fully air-conditioned. The community center, we have planned in that general area, as Garrett spoke to. Community room, police substation. There will be a community kiosk also within the food court. Again, you can see a corner element. Graphics could play a big part of it. I would describe our architecture as quiet and contemporary. It's clean, it's modern, it's not cluttered. Again, West Core will do the building shell, and what the building shell is, is basically the framework of the building, and we will also do every building, including all the exterior finishes, above 16 feet. Below 16 feet, the tenant will apply their storefronts. So each building basically serves as a blank canvas, and we will allow the retail storefronts to express their individual brand through their own unique design. These are some examples of the storefronts that we plan on having at Goodyear. In closing, our goal has always been to create a sense of place, as Garrett said, a true destination for fine dining, for entertainment, for play, and of course, state-of-the-art shopping for the city of Goodyear and the entire West Valley. Now, Garrett and I'd like to entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions of the applicant. Mr. Bay.
Okay, thank you. You talked about the inclusion of the second story on Buildings Three and Four, I believe you noted. And then you stated that there was 16-foot frontage for all of the other retail businesses. So I guess my question would be, in the cases where you have a second story, though it illustrated some amenity in terms of height, will the storefronts underneath those businesses still have that 16 feet, or what happens to their signage?
They will still, Commissioner Bay, have that. They can go up as high as 16 feet underneath, and we will build the office buildings above in their entirety.
Okay.
At the time of the mall. They won't be added later.
Okay.
So in no way will they affect the storefronts.
So the illustration that you're providing here indicates that the bottom level of the second story is a minimum 16 feet.
We're hoping they all go up 16.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Actually, we're not hoping, we're insisting.
Commissioner Williams, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. In my packet of information on all of the impact areas, the solid waste impact says you will have a private contract for tri-service, but it says nothing about recycling. Will you provide opportunities for your tenants and your customers to recycle? And what kind of effort will you make to encourage both your customers and your tenants to recycle?
We are currently exploring the opportunity of going LEED-certified on this project. We will encourage our tenants to recycle.
I mean, everything else is so forward-looking.
Right.
And you seem to be doing everything else so right, but it's, you know, we had our landfill tour canceled the other day, but I've seen landfills, and landfills are ugly, and anything we can do to reduce the need for landfills, I'm strongly in favor of.
Chairman, Commissioner Member Williams, green building and sustainable building are a high priority for our company. It's a priority for our executives as well as our development team, and as Ron mentioned, we're evaluating all of the potential ways that we can make this site, and frankly, projects that we build from here on out, more environmentally friendly. And that does include recycling. It includes the possibility of pervious pavement, reclaimed water for landscaping. We're evaluating all those options and opportunities that we have for the site, including recycling.
Thank you.
The answer is yes.
Questions? Questions, questions, questions? My turn. Let me jump on the recycling bandwagon. You obviously have other sites around the metro area, since you're the largest developer of malls, so how do you recycle at some of the other? Can you give us some examples of how you do that, or what do we do, or we haven't done it, and this is going to be the first?
Go ahead. No. At Santan, which opens in October of this year, we have separate recycle containers that all of our tenants, we insist that they use, and we pick them up, sort them, and take them to the appropriate landfills. And we anticipate something along that line here also.
But in the previous-built malls that you're operating, we're not going back and retrofitting or retro, you know, renegotiating the lease to encourage recycling or that?
Actually, we are. As we continue to turn projects over and turn tenants over, as we make changes to our projects, we're trying to add more products with recycled materials and more opportunities for our tenants and for our mall management teams to recycle. So we will see a lot more of that going forward.
Next question. I'm really, I'm very excited about the office space. I think it's great. My curiosity, and this is, who do you envision, who is the market for office space in this area? And I'm sure if I didn't ask it, somebody at City Council would have.
Yes. This office space is a little bit different than, you know, a typical Class A office space. If there's a large floor plate tenant, 10, 15, 20,000 square feet, that wants to go to a five-story or higher office building, and though they have dedicated parking, this is not for you. This is not your project. This will be for smaller companies, could be small design firms, insurance, real estate, that want to be a part of this synergy and be a part of this amenity and have the restaurants and the shopping, and be willing to work with the fact that it's going to be a very active site. There's always going to be people that are looking for parking, and, you know, potential conflicts with office parking always occur in these kinds of situations. We agree with you. We think it's very unique space, and those are the kinds of tenants that you'll see that are going to be smaller.
I assume we're going to have some type of elevators and stairways to get up and courtyards for the office for the second-story type thing?
Yes, Chairman, you're exactly right.
Okay.
All the exits will be pro-coerced. There'll be elevators and stairs.
Great. Okay. Next question, and this is more of a curiosity. On your original plan at the marketplace that's being, you know, dirt is being turned now, you had, I believe, two hotel sites, and on one of the outparcels, there's another hotel site. Can you enlighten us? Are there any hotels coming that we ought to know about or at least anticipate, you know, getting frequent mile cards?
Chairman, we haven't made any announcements yet, but we do have hotel users for two of those three sites, and those announcements will be coming soon, and you should expect to see those hotels being developed probably toward the middle of next year. And that third one that we're showing on there, again, that's a conceptual plan. We think there could be more than just one more hotel. There could be opportunities for two or three more. And we have 150 acres of additional development to do here, and as more commercial activity takes place, it's going to drive more demand for more rooms as well.
Okay, thank you. Look forward to hearing some top-end hotels. All right. Are there any other questions of the applicant?
Just a comment.
Mr. Commissioner Williams.
I just would like to commend you. You seem to be planning very, very well in sincerely attempting to put a first-class, cutting-edge mall in our town, and I appreciate that, and I wish you well.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to echo that comment, and I know before I've said welcome to Goodyear, but it's been a while. We've had various shopping venues here, but the citizens here have been waiting anxiously, sweating at the palms even, for something more elaborate of shopping experience, and so we really look forward to it, and anything we can do to help to spread that, you can comment that for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Member. And I will say too that the tenants that have announced already, Dillars has announced their intention to come to the site, Parkin's Theaters has announced their intentions to come to the site, and we have, just in the past few months, announced Coach, Chico's, White House Black Market. So, I mean, this is very early, you know, two years out from opening. To have those kinds of tenants already in place, leases signed in some cases, and announcing that they're going to be part of the project is very great news. And you said it, you look at this part of the valley, you know, four of the nine fastest-growing cities in the country are right in this market, including Goodyear, and we know there's a lot of demand for this kind of retail. We're looking forward to getting it open, and I tell you, our retailers are seeing the same thing. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? In that case, I'm closing the public hearing. Is there any commission discussion on this action? Commissioner Williams?
Well, I just have a request of staff. As we go forward and get into these larger developments, and even some of the smaller ones, I would hope that we would start to make recycling more prominent in our stipulations and our criteria, and, you know, make sure that we list recycling, because I think, you know, I know the City Council is strongly in favor of recycling. Those of you that don't know, I was chairman of the Solid Waste Recycling Committee for the city of Goodyear, so I have, I take every chance I can to get up on my soapbox. But I know the council is strongly in favor of recycling, and I think us listing it separately emphasizes the city's desire to be a leader in recycling. And as we go forward, I would like to see more of it listed in the impact statements other than just being lumped in the solid waste. I'd like to see it be called out by itself. Thank you.
The chair is going to take it upon himself to, we're going to direct staff to, we would like to see some type of stipulation in these type of shopping centers that are coming forward that deals with recycling on a commercial basis. We understand that this is difficult. However, I think the sentiment of the commission and probably the sentiment of the council and the sentiment of the community is to do everything possible that Commissioner Williams said, and I'm going to make it a request to the commission unless I hear somebody saying they don't want to participate in that. So we will leave that to you, but we want to see something in the future as these projects come forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I appreciate that, and maybe as a proposal in response, let us evaluate that and bring back to something to you as a discussion item. Obviously, the commission receives all types of applications, rezoning applications that have no specific development plans yet. This site plan is a little bit unusual because you normally don't see site plans, but I understand that the approach is that in our project evaluations and even for land use proposals, you know, that we do consideration for recycling or provide discussion with the applicants for recycling, including potential stipulations and other actions. So let us evaluate that and bring that back to you as a discussion item.
I appreciate that, and I accept those sentiments, and we look forward to hearing from staff.
Perhaps so. It shouldn't be just limited to recycling. There could be other things, including reduced water usage, energy efficiency, other things, maybe a whole package of green, you know, activities that could all be part and parcel to this discussion.
If staff wants to, I would, the only caution I would say is, let's, maybe we can do baby steps on this and just take it incrementally, but I think Commissioner Lacks has a very good idea, because we are going to, you know, this is Arizona, this is a desert, and eventually we're going to have to start dealing with the water issues. And if we can deal with solid waste and energy, I think we'll be a better community. So I would encourage staff to, maybe we'll work on the recycling and see where we go, and then move along to some of the other areas. If that's okay with Commissioner Lacks.
Let us evaluate that and bring back to you. Regarding reclaimed water, there are projects that utilize that today, and I think it certainly would be well for us to advise you of that as part of our evaluation, that they are doing things of that nature. So give us a little bit of time, and we'll bring back some ideas on how we can implement this.
All right. Thank you very much. In that case, since there's no further commission discussion, I'm going to call for a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve case number 076000007, the request for site plan approval for the Estrella Falls Regional Shopping Center.
I'll second. I have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from Commissioner Bay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, seven zero unanimously. Keep going, men and ladies.
Nice job, guys.
All right. Moving right along, case number 07-500-00011, the 1033 Business Park preliminary flat. A request to approve approximately 159 acres into three lots for mixed commercial use. Generally located on the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Cotton Lane, the applicant is Mountain West Industrial Properties LLC.
Thank you, Chairman. Whoops, I'm sorry. I need to open the public hearing. Here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and the public. What you're looking at here on Elmo is the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Cotton Lane, and the 159 acres that you see here is what's highlighted, or I should say outlined here. You may recall back in June 9th, this was the subject property for a rezoning proposal for the 10303 Business Park, which proposed a final PAD designation for this property to allow for primarily industrial uses but also allowing opportunities for office and flex industrial uses as well. Again, to orient you with the site here real quick, directly to the north is the Via West piece known as Camelback 303 Business Park, similar type of land use being proposed there. Across the street to the east is the Sun Court Development, known as the Perimeter West or Palm Valley 303, I believe. To the east is a, kind of in its infancy, but a proposed commercial development right at the corner of Indian School Road and Citrus Road at the northeast corner, and of course, Talavertia Estates, which is the large lot residential development proposed here to the northwest. So the rezone was approved actually on August 27th by the City Council after their recess, and the developers for 10303 have come forward with a proposal to subdivide the area into three lots and one tract. The three lots, Lot One is the smallest of the lots. That is about 18 acres. This is proposed for the flex industrial type of uses, fronting Indian School Road. Lot Two is looking at the more of the small office and industrial type uses as well, and just to remind the commission, the rezone proposal did propose a number of buffering, or require a number of buffering mechanisms for this boundary here with Talavertia Estates, including an eight-foot wall, as well as enough separation between the buildings facing Talavertia Estates. And finally, Lot Three is where primarily the warehouse and distribution type of buildings will be constructed. The half-acre tract that you see here is the proposed location for the Arizona American Water Company well that will supply the water for the entire site. And of course, you have the Collector Road, which is tentatively named West Minazona Avenue connecting Indian School, or I Road, which is tentatively named West Minnesota Avenue, connecting Indian School, or excuse me, Cotton Lane to the east and Indian School Road to the south. As such, the staff is recommending approval subject to the 17 stipulations before you, many of them which are derived from the rezon proposal that came before you a couple of months ago. The applicant is here to answer any questions you might have, and at this point, I could conclude my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Questions of staff. Commissioner Lortano?
It says in here that the lots could be re-subdivided again down. Would that come before us again, or would that, is that found at that point?
Chairman Gelsner, Commissioner Lortano, it may or may not, depending on how much further it will be subdivided. There is a new instrument called a Minor Land Division that is reviewed administratively, and I think there's a cap on how many times it can be subdivided before it goes through the public review process. I believe it's three. But depending on the, the nature of the proposal, it may, may come before you again, as yet another plat.
I just wanted to three, so if that's why.
Right.
Commissioner Williams?
There's a, just, there's a large warehouse that's under construction up in that area. On this map, can you show us where that's located?
Certainly. I believe it's directly west of Cotton Lane, generally in this area right here. There's a large warehouse building currently being constructed.
So it's on, it's, it's across Cotton Lane? It's on the other side of Cotton Lane?
Correct. On the east side of Cotton Lane.
It's between the 303 and Cotton Lane. Okay. Thank you.
Questions over here?
One, Chairman. You piqued an interest in the water district on that half acre?
Could you, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the beginning part of your question.
You brought an interest from me on the water district. This is the same water district that had some sunken tanks further east, north and east. Is this the same water district?
I don't believe so. I believe you're referring to something else.
Yes, it is. It is the Arizona American Water Company, the one that, that you saw as a use permit for a water storage tank at the southwest corner of Cam, Camelback and Citrus.
Right.
Yes, same water company.
Well, my, my interest is, is this a site that will have above-ground wells, or I mean, above-ground storage facilities, because this is next to residential development. I'm, I'm just asking a question, but we had some major concern on the Camelback facility, and we asked that they sink those. Are we going to be in the same situation here? I know this isn't part of the application, but it's a flag.
I believe that this tract for Arizona American is for a well
It's a well.
to be operated, not as a storage facility.
Can we ask the applicant, when they speak, to address that issue?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Because I have one. On Lot 1, Farhead, will we see building elevations, or is that going to be administratively approved? And would, would you, would we expect to see something similar to what was built on Bullard Avenue, just south of the Esquik and Chili, Esquik and Tabasco Sauces?
Mr. Chairman, if we're, if we receive a site plan for an industrial development, for an industrial building, regardless of what, what size it is, it will be reviewed administratively. However, if we see a large retail user, which I highly doubt, that may become, come before you for a site plan review, and that will include elevations. Other than that, the, the staff reviews all the site plans against the design guidelines and of course, with the applicant to comply with them.
Okay. That answered my question. Any other questions of staff? Let me invite the applicant to, you're winning, make it short.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Gelsner, members of the Commission. My name is Karen Keith. I'm with Tiffany and Bosco, located at 2525 East Camelback in Phoenix. Very happy to be before you this evening, to take us another step closer to the development of the 10303 Business Park. And I'm here before you this evening on behalf of Mountain West Industrial Properties. Also joining me is Anthony Sumner with Sandbox Development. To answer the question about the, where is the well site, I'm, just want to confirm staff suspicions that it is simply a well site. It's not a water reservoir. It's not meant for storage, so it does not involve an underground facility, as in the instance that you mentioned with the other properties. So hopefully that answers that question. We, as you know, we were just here before you a couple of months ago with the zoning, and as you can see with our presence tonight, we're working very diligently in the development process of 10303. And as such, we will see, staff will see a couple more applications in the next few weeks for the final plat, as well as the site plan for everything east of Minnesota. So again, we're working very diligently in, toward the development of this business park. And to answer your question, Commissioner Gelsner, as far as the look of that, we're working on the concept elevations right now. What you see on Bullard is similar in nature, but we understand the requirements of the Goodyear Design Guidelines for industrial development, and we'll make sure that we comply with those design guidelines.
Okay. Thank you very much. Karen, let me, Commissioner Williams?
May I just make a clarifying comment on the water area? The issue is not necessarily whether or not you're going to store water. The issue is to make sure that whatever is on there, that the height of the building does not intrude too much into the residential area, and that it's buffered from the residential area, similar to the way that the water storage area to the north will be buffered. Is that right, Karen?
Yes, correct.
See, the, the issue, the issue is buffering the facility from the residential area.
Absolutely. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, we certainly understand that concern, and as you see here on Elmo, along this west property line, we had a number of buffering measures that were proposed in our PAD and echoed, and I think furthered, in some of our stipulations that discuss how we buffer development along that edge from the adjacent residential development. So we're very aware of those issues. This particular facility proposed on that half-acre parcel is an underground facility. It's not an above-ground facility, and so that, of course, will help with the buffering. But then we also have a landscape buffer that's situated along this property line to help those buffering measures.
Thank you.
I, I want to follow up on what Commissioner, when you drive up Bullard Ave, when you drive up Bullard Avenue just to the south of the RID Canal, if you're going north, and there is a housing development, and there are four tan large vessels that are sitting in the water pumping station on Bullard, that were built by SunCorps when they, and I, there's some kind of filtration, carbon filtering, water treatment facilities, and they stand about 20 feet tall. And I, what I would like to see, and I think Commissioner Williams and the rest of us would support, is that if you, if any, if any type of water pumping mechanism or filtration mechanism is going to extend more than 10 feet high, it needs to be buried or mitigated, and I think it can be handled by staff if that's acceptable to the rest of the Commission.
Just wanted to confirm really quickly. There's going to be an eight-foot wall that surrounds this facility, and we do not anticipate any kind of equipment, structure, or any sort that will go above the height of that wall.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Any other questions of staff?
Just a question about the plan, if you don't mind. I was looking at, I was looking at the actual, I guess I'm on sheet three, and you've got something called a spreader ditch. And so, kind of excuse my ignorance, could you kind of explain to me what that is and how that functions? Is that a, is that a construction element?
Could you identify yourself for the record?
I mean, Commissioner, Member Ray, for the record, my name's Anthony Sumner with Sandbox Development, address 5009 East Washington, Suite 100 in Phoenix. I can describe briefly how some of the spreader ditches will work. For example, over here, it's primarily engineering term that will address how the water would flow. And basically, whenever you do a development, from an engineering standpoint, we've got to accept the drainage coming onto our property. Then we also have to return the drainage in its historical patterns, so that it's not at a concentrated flow, so we don't cause erosion and other, you know, type of issues for downstream users. So when the water is coming onto our property, we'll collect it either through a retention basin or some other means, and then we'll create what's commonly referred to as just a spreader basin or a spreader ditch, and that will return it to a more gradual sheet flow nature, so that it will continue on to other properties in the nature that it was currently in prior to development, so that we don't adversely impact downstream flows.
So, so we won't see any construction then? Since this is an engineering function, you won't see any facilities go up over it or anything like that?
No, it's primarily going to be like a retention basin. It'll be landscaped and have erosion control measures and so on.
And that's quite a distance from the roadway.
Ms. Chairman, if I might add, to add to that, that that spreader drainage basin, you need to look at that as being temporary, as Lot 3 is built. They will relocate that required retention to the more, the normal retention basins adjacent to the street, on the sides of buildings, and things of that nature. But at the subdivision stage, they need to provide for the drainage, and they do this in the spreader basins, to handle the volume. But they are temporary in terms of how, what you see in this rectangular shape today.
Okay, good. Good. That's a good education. Thank you.
I have a question. Ms. Keith, could you tell us how Lot 3 is going to buffer against the, all the parcels on Cotton Lane that are not part of the, that are not part of this project? I believe there's some city property there, and there's a golf, golf cart.
Golf cart or golf maintenance.
Right, yeah. Just more for curiosity, please.
We're actually still working on the site plan concepts right now, so what we're looking at is a series of buildings across Lot 3, and for the most part, you will not have buildings immediately abutting those out parcels. It will be landscaping and parking areas and access aisles and things of that nature.
So, so there is some kind of setback between the edge of the property and those, 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 those owners?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of staff or the applicant?
Just one comment. I, I like the larger print.
Can't take credit for that one.
Just wanted to mention that.
And, and on that note, and on, on saving our eyes, I'm going to close the public hearing and take any count, any Commission discussion. Mr. Williams? No, okay.
Thank you. I've had my second.
Mr. Lacks, anything? All right. In that case, I will entertain a motion from the Commission on this case.
Chairman Gelsner, I'd like to make a motion that be approved case number 07500000011, with the stipulations assigned with that.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bay, and I have a second from Commissioner Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving right along, staff communications. Staff requests a direction regarding changing the November commission meeting from November 21st to November 14th due to the Thanksgiving holiday, and the Chair concurs. How does the Commission feel?
I have a question and a comment.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
The question is, are we going to have the same issue in December?
I don't think so, because I, I just checked, and I'm going to be on the high season, so I'll, I'll be just, if we move this meeting, I will leave on the weekend after this meeting, and I'll be back in time for the December meeting. We have a week and a half before the Christmas holiday. I think we're like, it's a full week.
And I have no problem with the change. I may be just a little bit late, because I have a six o'clock meeting in City Hall with the Groundfield Committee on that night.
Well, we can, no problem. We'll, we'll hold off till you get here.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I won't be able to make it.
Okay. Sorry.
Prior commitment.
Prior commitment. Sorry about that. All right. But I think, well, any other problems or, I think we'll still have a quorum? Right. So, so directed. Please advertise it. Any, any other comments? Any communications to staff?
No.
Any communications to the Commission? Thank you for working on the, the recycling and the other proposals, and, you know, when, when life gets better, we'll, we look forward to hearing those, maybe in January or February, somewhere in that vicinity. In that case, motion adjourned?
No.
Second.